And recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, public for which it stands, one nation, God and individual.
I'll just pray. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward. Ready us to make every moment count, in Jesus' name. Minutes for, seconds for your own intentions. A motion to approve the agenda.
But, yeah, okay. Just moves if you have something.
I'd like to move items K two and K three to after executive committee. That's the short-term disability proposal and the options for retirement. Um, because they both concern contracts, personnel, and some legal issues, and are impacted by...
Certainly. Well, let's just move, uh, I, I don't think we need it in form of the motion. Let's just move that down to after executive session, since the agenda is not approved yet. So, a motion to approve the agenda with items K two and K three moved to after executive session.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda with those two items moved to after executive session. Um, all those, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion is, or the agenda is approved. Typically...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, has the meeting started? I can't join the meeting yet. I'll be okay.
What did you do?
Tony, is he on the ones that are blocked?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm there.
I'm there.
Crane's there. I'm there. Earl's, Earl's there. Our most techie commissioner is having trouble getting on the computer.
New year, I'm on my way out. I got it now.
Yep, we're good.
There you go.
I think typically at this time, the gavel is handed over to the auditor. I think that's how you guys have done that in the past. That's how, if you want me to do that, that's fine, unless...
Yeah, sure. As long as we get it back sometime.
Here's my gavel.
Yes.
I do have an apple gavel. Do you want that?
No, thank you.
I shouldn't ask that, should I? It might be used on one of us.
If you had an orange gavel, I would, but...
I will, uh, hand the gavel over to the auditor, Rhea Crane, and she'll be in charge of this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your service in 2024, and at this time, we will open up the floor for nominations for chair.
I'll nominate Gary for chair.
Second.
Any other motions for chair? At this time, we were just all in favor of having Chairman, excuse me, Commissioner Dering be the chair for 2025, please say aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve, uh...
Second.
Motion in a second on the floor to approve, uh, Dering as vice chair. Is there any other nominations? Other nominations? Uh, Talbot was, Talbot made the motion, Rich seconded. Hearing no other nominations, all those in favor of Dering, Creed, uh, being the vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Gary, you and I should have done some politicking before today and got this reversed and got Talbot and Rich in there.
You guys did such a great job last year.
Next year, you watch.
Well, thank you guys for your support. I do, and, I, I do enjoy being the chair. It's, uh, it's, it's me involved, so... Uh, brings us up to C one on the agenda, and thank you, Dering, for also serving as the vice chair.
Oh.
I'm being nice.
You, I'm getting...
Now we're being, now we're thanking each other.
You, you, you and I are, you know, poor Jess, she doesn't get to talk to you near as much as I do.
Probably right. So, we just started the year being nice, so we, we got that out of the way. So, let's move on to routine business. The opportunity for public comment, does anybody from the public wish to speak for the commission?
Good morning, Larry. How are the roads? That's good.
Uh, I'd just like to take a moment. I don't think he's here. I'd like to thank Ted...
Larry, would you just please announce your name?
Oh, Larry Newman from Blackhawk.
Thank you, we all know you, but, uh...
I'd like to thank Ted Newman for his service as a commissioner these past few years, and I hope his replacement is against zoning and vacating and abandoning section right aways. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Newman, for, for, for all your attendance, too. Appreciate you coming. Does anybody from the public, anyone else from the public wish to speak? Anybody else wish to speak? Not seeing anyone come for the dice, uh, closed public comment, and we will move down to, uh, facilities. Facilities report.
Good morning, Commission.
Good morning, Ben.
Ben Petrocco, Meade County Facilities Director here with just a quick, short report on some of our December workload. I don't have a whole lot to report, other than what the KPI shows there. We had a total of thirty-eight work orders, mostly just the standard stuff, locks, um, plumbing issues in the jail, and the likes of that. Few of our key projects that we were able to complete in the month of December included the installation of several new data drops and wireless access, access points that we installed for the new radio system in the law center, or for the COs to use between buildings now. They're going to that Wi-Fi setup, but we got all those installed, but I don't believe they've switched over to the new radios quite yet. I think they're still waiting to purchase some more of them. Um, another one we did was the UPS backup power system for this building was due for new batteries, and that involved replacing seventy-eight batteries in the cabinet downstairs, so that was kind of a, an undertaking, but we should be good with those now for another five years on that one, so... The other thing I want to talk a little bit was the roof project update. I'm still working with Williams and Associates on getting the specs built for that, for the, both those projects. Um, I did receive an approximate timeline schedule that Jason provided, that, I'll go ahead and email you guys that, so you all have that, just so you can kind of see the scope of everything and the timelines, and obviously, it's a ways out yet before we actually can get somebody to do it, but he did provide that, so... I guess those are the main things I've been working on, is trying to get those projects put together, along with the cooling tower.
You, you know, um, last, I think it was last week, when I was in the treasurer's office, and I saw they were, I assume, installing the, the new hardware, et cetera, for six-oh-five live, whatever it's called, for license plate. Did, did you folks help with the wiring and stuff on that, too, or...
No.
Six-oh-five, someone's I T. Six-oh-five, it's not quite ready yet, we're just in the preliminary stage, getting up access to the, any environments that I'm included in, setting up the Wi-Fi authentication with the media. Access to the state.
Well, I saw there was a bunch of clay, right? Yeah. He, he was in there, and I thought doing some wiring and stuff, and I didn't know if the, the two departments weren't coordinating that, since some of it's wiring and stuff, or how you guys work.
Dan Manchin, he helped us out last week, uh, for Wi-Fi radio system.
Oh, oh, okay.
We had some access point for it.
Yeah.
I was actually installing all the hardware that was needed for the six-oh-five.
Thank you. You're good. I, I really enjoyed the fact you two can work together. For, Lord knows, we got enough going on around here.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of stuff where we cross, we have to cross together and work on, on some of that, so...
Any other questions for Ben? Ben, uh, Ben, I, I just, go ahead, Ben, so, yeah. Oh, I just do want to thank you for the, the work you did on Time Capsule.
Oh.
Uh, we, we held that on December eighteenth, and, and you, you worked hand-in-hand with the Meade County History Society, uh, and they got some displays down by the treasurer's office. You guys want to check it out?
Yeah, I think that turned out pretty good.
Yeah. So... Yeah, I think so, and...
I learned a few things.
Yep, and Sheriff West told the cooks at the jail, thanks for the cookies. They made, what, five dozen cookies, I believe? There, there was a lot of cookies.
I understand the staff liked it. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't...
Huh? They got eaten? That's good.
They were, they were delicious, so thank the cooks, please.
And, and those cookies normally only come out during the rally.
Wow, wow.
So, that was a special, unless Pat's changed that.
I, I...
No, they're afraid too many people that come to the meeting.
I do want to apologize to, to Commissioner Severn. Uh, we had a new commissioner, obviously, up here, as, as Mr. Newman mentioned. Uh, I did want to introduce him. Uh, you live in the Blackhawk area, uh, and, uh, it's a big undertaking. You, you have anything to say? Real good. So, I've gotten to know him in the past month or so, and, and, uh, he'll be a, Ted will definitely be missed, but, uh, he'll be a good addition to the commission. Thanks for stepping up and getting on.
Earl, in the past, I was a newspaper reporter. I can't help but ask, since we do have viewers on YouTube, would you mind telling all of us a, a little bit about you, because I really don't know much about you.
Uh, well, I was born and raised in Oneida, South Dakota.
Oh, you're kidding?
Uh, I've lived out in the hills for, uh, way too long. Um, as, uh, Commissioner Dering said, I live in Blackhawk, South Dakota. I have a wife and three daughters, an eleven-year-old, a twelve-year-old, and a almost-six-year-old. Um, I own a geotechnical engineering firm, and, uh, we've been doing that for about twenty years, and we hunt and fish, and nothing much else about us there.
You know, you're really in trouble now. My family comes from Oneida.
Okay.
And so, there's only about twelve families out there, right?
About nine now.
I, I wonder if we're related? I'm just kidding.
Ah, this is first meeting, come on. Thank you, Earl. Uh, brings us down to C three, IT department.
Morning Commissioners, uh, Tony Cummins, Meade County IT. Uh, I don't have a whole lot to report this morning, other than, um, just making a couple of comments on our, uh, KPIs and et cetera. Um, busy year, uh, busy December, um, but it turned out that, you know, on average, it's on power the last couple of years, so nothing, nothing too crazy going on there. Um, I don't have any, anymore to add to the KPI, other than what's up there. If you guys have any questions, um...
Um, how's that new stuff coming?
So, we, uh, got delivery of the new hardware, um, two days ago, or, yeah, two days ago, and we are now starting to set up some scheduling to implement that replacement.
What all will that involve?
Um, a lot of work.
And a couple weekends.
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna have to come up with some kind of a plan to lessen, lessen downtime as best we can, but there's always gonna be some, some, some downtime, so I'm trying to schedule that where it doesn't impact the day-to-day. So, I expect a weekend or two. Um, the other report...
I appreciate the fact you know how to do it.
We'll see. Um, the cyber, cyber hygiene report that you guys like to, to look at, we're sitting very good, you know? Um, we continue to monitor and adjust accordingly per the CISA and, um, Dakota State recommendations. I do, I do lean heavily on those, uh, third-party entities to assist with that kind of stuff. It's nice to have an extra set of eyes on it, you know, to see if they can see something we don't, in here, in the, in the, uh, network itself. Um, and again, going back to the vulnerability, patching, and, and, uh, that kind of stuff, that's an ongoing day-to-day, sometimes two, three times a day. Um, it is what it is, and it's just, it's a never-ending circle. Like I said, I don't have a whole lot to report, other than I am about to jump on a call to start setting up the scheduling for our switch replacement and our firewall, so...
Any quick questions for Tony? Sounds like he's got his light pretty full right now.
Will, will the group from Dakota Dunes come out and help you at all, or do they just ship material?
RTI, well, I will have a tech on-site to assist, yes, that was part of the agreement, so, yeah. I have some resources to lean on for that.
Hey, thanks, Mr. Coming.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, guys.
Uh, emergency management, BSO.
Morning Commissioners.
Hi.
John Henderson, Meade County Emergency Management and Veteran Services. Emergency management side of the house, um, this is actually last week, but not December, but seems to be a pattern. A week before the meetings, there's some event that happens, but, um, on the late evening on the seventh, um, leading into the eighth, I was contacted by dispatch. There was a gas, uh, a vehicle hit a gas line in Blackhawk area, so they evacuated three families, and we all grouped up at the Blackhawk Fire Department and spent the night with them and tried to, uh, assist them where I could. Unfortunately, Red Cross didn't assist us because, um, it was out of scope, uh, for gas leaks, even though they were displaced.
Because it didn't blow?
It's because, uh, it wasn't a forty-eight-hour thing, is what it is. They weren't technically displaced for a certain length of time, which is fine. They were able to get back into their homes later that morning.
Oh.
So, no harm, no foul, I suppose. Um, any questions about emergency management?
Did we start not scheduling you, so you don't have things to wait for?
Maybe, I don't know. I, I wouldn't, I, I, I wouldn't mess with anything right now, because it might jinx, you know? Um, okay, on the veteran services side of the house, a hundred-and-fifty-three veteran assists, considering, kind of lost a week through the holidays, um, that's a pretty high number, for three weeks. Um, thirty-five new veterans that I, uh, processed, and I'm already getting close to a hundred halfway through the month, so this might be my busiest month yet.
Say that every month.
I know, it keeps growing. Uh, I think it was eighty-three when I started, on averag, or, you know, and then it just grows and grows.
Um, are these veterans, um, Vietnam or Iraqi and...
Burial assists, um, uh, Vietnam Gulf War, education.
Okay, so, some of these are burials. I wonder if you, I wonder if it wouldn't hurt to just do a side thing off for us to say which ones are, of the, of the hundred, say, a hundred-and-ten new ones, fifteen were burials, because it would give us an idea that it wouldn't necessarily be a continuing on, ongoing, although I guess if they were getting survivors' benefits and stuff, it's not just a one-time occurrence.
Well, I mean, I've had some that come in, and they're, uh, ill, maybe they develop cancer, and then the cancer gets worse, they pass away, so they've, I've already seen them three or four times, and then the spouse comes in for burial assistance, and then she comes in again for dependency and indemnity compensation, so there's, there's a life cycle to most veterans, and they're not getting any younger, and unfortunately, um, knock on wood, even my generation are developing cancer, unfortunately. The list of cancer presumptives for, uh, Gulf War Desert Storm, burn pits, if you will, is extensive. I haven't found a cancer that's not covered yet, so it's, it seems to be accelerating, so...
Any questions for Mr. Henderson?
Like a Debbie Downer.
Uh, thank you. Right.
Thanks. All right, enjoy.
Yeah, thank you, uh, yeah.
You bet.
President Shake, I see you walked in. Do you have something to report?
Good morning, I just wanted to report about six-oh-five drive. I wanted to get this into the minutes.
Please, please announce your...
Oh, I'm sorry. Robin Shreik, Meade County Treasurer. I just wanted to make sure that we got this in the minutes, so people who are reading the minutes in the paper are aware that we will be taking down the South Dakota car system the night of the thirteenth of February, so on Friday, February fourteenth, we will not be doing any motor vehicle transactions in the treasurer's office. They will have to wait until February eighteenth, when we're back up and running on the six-oh-five drive software. The eighteenth, we'll be back up and running on the new system, but we will retire the old system out on February thirteenth. No motor vehicle transactions on February fourteenth.
Get a notice on our, um, website, too?
We have been posting on Facebook and keeping everybody abreast. I'm doing some public service announcements, trying to get that news out there.
Let's put one in the door, like we do when we...
Yes, sir. Yes, I will do so.
What I was suggesting, maybe you already...
Absolutely.
You know, I sent you that. I don't know, you and I have both been going different directions. We need to, uh, get back with that one I sent you.
Absolutely, I did send that out to KBHB, KOTA.
Oh, I never posted it. I didn't know you sent it.
Yeah, I did go ahead and send that out, so...
Okay, okay.
Robin, do you have everything that you need in the, in the office there?
Yes, absolutely, yep. Clayton and Tony have been great, and right now, our staff has been training, they have to have X amount of hours in on training. A lot of them are doing it twice, just so they make sure that they're informed on how to run that software.
So far, no unknowns, right? That we, like, we didn't, like, need a printer, need things like that?
Right, no, we have everything that we need. Thank you for asking.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for letting me have that time.
Um...
If you made any changes on that...
Any other departments want to report at this time? Sheriff West, you don't have anything? I don't see down in the reports, Ben, up yet. Okay, let's move down to planning, planning report, and see, uh, we go to, are you ready at equalization, Rhea, or would you rather wait on that? All right, moving down to E one in the agenda, if you follow along.
Good morning Commissioners, Rhea Crane, Director of Equalization. I gave you an update in, um, board docs with what we have accomplished in the month of December. We visited, or we valued a lot of properties, and by we, I should say the appraisers. I did not do that. Six-hundred-and-sixty-three properties were valued for the reappraisal area alone, and twenty-two building permit properties were valued. Um, you can see that we have found some, um, properties that did not have building permits that have been turned over to the planning office to, um, to deal with or to, to rectify. Um, John has completed the egg intentions. We're happy to report that the egg values were run by planning department. Pipe file was uploaded, all was well. Egg values are good to go for 2025. We're now working on non-egg intentions, and we're hoping to have those uploaded, um, excuse me, submitted to Department Revenue by the end of this week. Cindy's last day, I'm sorry to report, is going to be Friday. As you can tell, we're all wearing black, as we're in mourning, so we're, um, for any public out there, we're hoping that y'all will come in this afternoon and celebrate with Cindy as well.
I noticed that, um, I think thankfully, um, home sale prices are starting to stabilize.
I will tell you... I will tell you that the first group of properties that I have, I entered values for a couple of weeks ago, we did actually in that particular subdivision lower about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's a first in a long, long time, if ever, honestly.
Good news.
It is, good news.
For taxpayers, yes.
I mean, not for the-
And for home, but, well-
For taxpayers.
And really, unless you're building a new home, even if you're selling an existing home, even at stabilized prices, you should make a pretty good profit.
Looking at the January house home listings that are listed for sale, um, it appears that there's more properties for sale right now than there has been for a while.
I, I'd like to thank Cindy for her service and her time here, she's done a fantastic job and, um, you know, we don't always get to say, say thanks to everybody, but, um-
She'll be here in a few minutes, you can thank her yourself. Hopefully. I'll run down the hall and grab them because I think we're waiting for them.
Oh, I'm sure they're waiting.
Have you texted them?
I did not text them, I'm assuming they're watching.
Oh, okay, um, let's, uh, while we're waiting on them, let's just keep moving. Let's throw on your other hat, I don't see, uh, there's not much in auditor, I think we can take care of auditor, which is in J. You wouldn't mind putting your other hat on? While we're waiting on them? We're at item J one now on the agenda, gonna play musical chairs on, on, on-
We do have the overtime report for, which will actually be for the end of twenty, whoa, what do we have here? Actually show December of twenty-three, but I think that is supposed to be December of twenty-four.
I, I figured it was December twenty-third that it was ran.
Let's run with that, Rich, I like it.
That's probably, yeah.
Oh, you know what that is? You can actually take J one completely off and let's just go with J two and J three. J one was a carryover from last year's meeting, from the first meeting of the year.
Oh, okay, okay.
My apologies on that. We do have the overtime report from twelve twenty-seven and from the one-ten payroll cycles.
So the twelve twenty-seven would be the, and that shows the total for the year, right?
Yes, that is correct.
So we spent, uh, it's not totaled, is it? Oh, yeah, uh, so we spent three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in overtime.
That is correct.
That was on all departments, just so everybody knows.
Yes.
Any other questions on that? Let's move to item J four then, which will take some action. Or do, do you need somebody to come up for that? Or Aaron's here.
Aaron is in training.
Aaron is in training to, uh, work on the minutes and that way we'll have, uh, two people that are- Trainer. Item J four.
Alright, so this is for a, oh, Aaron Cox, Deputy Auditor. So this is for a, set a meeting for February eleventh for a transfer from Tamela Batista Garage Sports DBA to, uh, Garage Sports LLC.
Uh, I'll make a motion to set the hearing for war, February eleventh at ten AM.
Second.
Motion is second to, uh, set the public hearing for February eleventh at ten AM, the transfer retail on, off sale, wine and cooler. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Go back to, you got the equalization staff, I've jumped around so much, I don't even know where I'm at right now, so. Um, let's go back to equalization, which, uh, let's finish that out since we started it. The item E two.
Welcome to your last meeting, Cindy.
I'd like to call her deserter, but she'd probably get angry with me.
I don't think she's-
Thank you.
Disturbing.
Anyhow, so we have, um, veterans exemptions, this one is for, um, an abatement and a refund. The law reads that they can request a refund back if they qualified but missed the deadline. Um, plus the VA is now taking it retroactive back to a date. So then therefore they qualify. So, and there's, it's-
I don't know where Ken went, he was here.
Oh, um, so I'm just bringing him before you to approve.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the tax refund, um, or-
This one has a refund and an abatement.
The abatement would be for twenty-four, payable, twenty-five.
Yes, so the tax refund for twenty-three, twenty-four and the abatement for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Correct.
Is that on both of these agendas?
Um-
It's the same item, this one's administrative content, one's public.
Okay.
Yeah, they're both administrative.
You're approving all of it, is what you're-
So I have two separate ones for two different veterans.
And I think that we should include a parcel number in the minutes so that we do have something to refer back to.
That parcel number?
Is in admin.
Yeah, we'll just have to make sure the-
We'll just have to start putting it, um, I will make sure and let Jen know that she needs to put in the parcel number so that-
I think it's OD six eight oh one eleven, isn't it?
It is, that's correct.
And for Earl, um, in order to qualify for a veteran's exemption, they have to be a hundred percent service-connected and permanent total in order to qualify. And they get two hundred thousand for the twenty-five payable and twenty-six, they have upped it from a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand comes off of their total assessed value. Okay?
And I, I know we've discussed this, but as far, and this is possibly more a question for Ken, um, Ria and Cindy and I discussed this, but do we need to add the name? I know that's a little bit sensitive, but at the same time, the abatement is on the parcel number, but it also is with the veterans, so therefore it's-
When I read through the agenda, I had the same thought. So we went to the statutes, um, and specifically, they're not listed.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure of what we had to do.
Yeah, so that was the best way we could come up with was by using the parcel number.
Sure.
But we will now start putting the parcel number in there so it'll make it more of a searchable field.
Okay.
Since this is a twenty-five percent hike in the, um, uh, exemption, uh, do you have an idea on the total valuation impacts since we have a lot of veterans?
Um, the total then, we have taken the veterans exemptions from we took it up twelve million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and forty-one over twenty twenty-four.
So it'd be nine million about?
Uh, it was ten million that we went up because of, I have some that have sold and-
Yeah, but what I mean is if, if-
Yeah, let's, let's get it, before we get too, in, too far in the weeds, let's get a second before, so we can- Didn't hear it. My hearing is getting worse. Seems to be on this side worse, but my, my hearing on this side seems to be worse.
I, I did second.
We have a motion in a second.
Unless I already forgot.
Yeah, I, I didn't hear the second either.
He's deaf and I have dementia.
Yeah, well.
Is there any discussion to this motion?
Hey, can you put me down as abstaining on this vote, please?
This is on E. Pardon me? This is on E two. Yes, E two, this is specifically on E two to approve it, which is essentially a, a statute requires us to, to do this, so there's, we just have to accept it essentially. Uh, any more discussion to this motion, more questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign and passes, uh, four to zero with, uh, Commissioner Loizoric abstaining. But item E three.
I, I want to follow up on this question before Cindy leaves.
Sure.
Because she'll be gone and you'll know the answer. I realize I deducted, you added, um, you're saying up until this year, we had about ten million in valuation exertion.
Forty million something.
Okay.
I didn't bring the report down from last year, but forty million last year.
Okay, so this year-
Now we're at fifty million, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-three. For an increase of ten million. Ouch.
That's ten million dollar valuation that came off of what were taxable.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, but it just gets spread along everybody else.
Yeah. When I did the, if, if memory serves me correctly, when I did the calculations last week, maybe you girls will remember when I made the comment, I think it was about a hundred and seventy-some thousand of county funds, county tax dollars that are not received, I didn't calculate it for everybody else.
Um, would you say that number again, please?
A hundred and seventy-some thousand of tax dollars not received by the county.
Let's go down to item E three.
Thank you, ladies.
So same-
Same thing.
I'll make a motion for the abatement request for twenty-four assessment payable twenty-five for parcel number zero C five zero zero three three six.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Cindy, before you leave, thank you for everything that you've done for the county and, uh, you're gonna be-
Thank you.
We certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
You miss us, just look at, uh, Doreen's Facebook.
Oh, we're, we're friends and social buddies.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Goodbye.
Let's move back up to planning, back up to D one in the agenda.
Good morning, Tanya Vig, Planning Director. Um, attached is the report, I'm not sure if there's any questions on it, um, I'm sorry, I'm not myself today. Um, we have fifty-eight building permits and license applications are taken in, down a little bit on the building permits. Um, other than that, moving forward, the same type of process, um, forty-four inspections. Um, we did, um, adhere to new planning board members, Michael Pauline and Nancy Veras, um, they had their first meeting January sixth. Um, uh, December's meetings, we had a lot of deferrals on the plats, they're still gathering data, working on them. Um, they did not turn them in for Febru-, or February's meeting, so I'm hoping maybe March will be a busy month, it seems like. Um, moving forward with those, the ETJ with the city of Sturgis is on hold. Um, there were some errors in the agreements back and forth, so we're working through those. Um, the resolution's not filed to be deannexed yet either, um, there's some stuff that came up during that process. Um, large pending projects still moving forward with those, Sunrise Ridge Subdivision, they have asked for an extension of their preliminary plat, that's next on the agenda. Affinity Landing is still moving forward, Golden Valley, those two. And it's your Golden Valley, Infinity Creek Meadows and Horizons, we'll start seeing more of those in March and April as they roll through their engineering. Um, Max has been busy with GIS, um, entered a bunch of new addresses, we've been mapping for twenty twenty-five assessments parcels. Um, and Max will start taking over Beacon subscriptions since Cindy is leaving, that was her chat task. Eggland ran good, we were successful with that. It's like everything's going well in December, considering all the holidays we had.
Questions for Ms. Vig? Not, let's go down to D two in the agenda.
Shannon's not quite here yet, he's on his way, not lucky, showed up, nope, he's on his way from Whitewood right now. So I don't know if you want to wait for him to present his request or if you want me to take it.
This one's pretty easy, isn't it?
I, I would think so.
I guess if there's any questions, we certainly can.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'd say go ahead.
Oh, okay.
With, a couple of minutes.
Oh, oh, he'll, okay. Um, the developers Jeremy Anderson and Dwight Patterson, um, contacted Shannon Vostick with a baseline to extend the preliminary plat um, extension, um, before we file into a final due to the construction, trying to get contractors and just the time of year. So we're doing a three-month extension, was approved, um, through the planning board unanimously, um, our ordinance only, only allows every three months for the extension, so, um, next month we will start working towards um, a variance for a one-year extension, so we don't have to come back every three months for that. Um, there's an agreement that's been signed, I believe, Ria.
Yes, it's attached.
It's attached, it's a separate attachment. So I had drafted up an, uh, an agreement template, um, Talbot and Ken have both reviewed it, um, and it was approved to extend from March twelfth to January twelfth for their extension, but we will come back again for a one-year extension of the project.
Loizoric, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, so a couple of things, uh, the ordinance, as, as pointed out, preliminary plat's only good for a year. Our ordinance only allows them a three-month extension. They think they're gonna need longer than that, so the idea would be there, we told them they'll have to come in and ask for a variance on the ordinance to get longer than that, that's where you'll see the longer extension come through as a variance. Um, Tanya did a nice job of writing up this agreement, Ken and I both looked at it, we added this section three, um, with the idea that this could be a form to be used in the future. Um, the idea is that, uh, you might have a developer come in on a preliminary plat who needs to extend, but we might say, well, if he's like building a through road or building a road that supplements a, you know, a previous phase that would condition the extension of the preliminary plat and then completing the road at, by a certain time or other conditions, maybe it's a water system or something like that. Um, in this situation, we didn't have anything that we felt they needed to complete because they haven't started building in the subdivision yet.
Right.
Um, and, uh, Bear Butte's gonna supply the water.
Yes.
And they're coordinating with the development of the interior waters. So, but that's, uh, Tanya did a nice job of coming up with the agreement, the statute calls for agreement, I think it's the first time I ever remember anybody coming in and requesting the extension. Um, uh, but we expect that as we see bigger and bigger developments, we might see it often. Other thing Tanya and I talked a little bit about is whether, whether we should build in a longer extension of a preliminary plat if your development's over so many lots that you can get, you can get, only like, you're only doing three or four lots, you can only get three months, but if you're doing thirty lots, maybe you can get up to a year because you're just- But, you know, it's, uh, that was some of the things we faced.
This, uh, you mentioned this is probably the first time you've had someone ask for an extension, is it because for them or is it because there's-
Hasn't been any. Uh, I think there's a little bit of both, I think we've had some that have gone longer than a year that just got missed, but got done. Um, I, I think we got a couple of things going in here, we have more, uh, larger or more subdivisions with more, more lots. Two, I think issues with the contractors have been really tough, so it's been tough to get people in under what people thought they could either number one afford, you know, costs have been going up and just availability. So I think that's driven some of these, this, this development, it's on the backside of Blackhawk, not Blackhawk, Bucksburg, excuse me. Um, you know, there has some road issues there, there's, they've got to build up a couple of roads, there's some terrain issues. That's been a little bit more, I, I, I think their engineer underestimated the amount of work that had to be done. Their original design, so they've been, they've had to do some redesign.
And also, um, they chose not to bond, so Pleasant Valley bonded a hundred percent of their project, so they choose not to bond, so then you have to move forward with the preliminary plat. Can't find a plat until now it's approved instead of the bond, so they chose the other option, is to build out instead of bonding.
Yeah, and that's, that's a very good point, they could have bonded it, uh, their preference was not to. If they bond it, we'll actually finalize the plat and they can start selling lots. So these guys will not be able to sell any lots. Plat will not be finalized.
Well, I think right now too, the whole financial interest rate thing is all unknown. I, I think I could be all wrong, but with the amount of rebuilding and everything that's gonna be taking place out in California, that is gonna have to affect all the costs of building materials and I can't imagine any contractors not- descending into that area, I, I, I could be delusional.
I'll make a motion to approve the three-month-
What do you think, Talbot?
I don't think you're delusional.
You, you think I am, or?
I do not think you are.
Oh, but wha- what do you think that fire will have on our overall building?
It'd be interesting to see if California can actually get out of its way with the red tape for development, if they're, if they're gonna have timely start construction. And, you know, the other thing we got going on, there's still some of that trillion dollars on infrastructure, that's, that's being spent down this year and next year, and as that flows through, that's probably gonna have some impact on supply.
Commissioner Liggett made a motion to accept this extension?
Second.
Motion, and a second by Commissioner Creed, any discussion to this motion?
Uh, you're gonna have to sign the agreement to.
Thought that, yep, as well as the auditor and uh, any discussion to this motion? Hearing non, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries, let's go down to highway. E one on the agenda.
I think it's off, Troy.
Good morning, Troy Eastman here, Mead County Highway Superintendent. Uh, the first agenda item we have today is for our bridge inspection resolution, it's a annual selection that we make to choose a consultant for doing our, our bridge inspections for all of our structures throughout the county. Um, Bros Engineering has been doing the inspections previously, and I guess that'd be my recommendation, um, just based off of, you know, some of these get inspected annually, some of them are every two years, but they're very familiar with, uh, what we've got going on in the, in the county already, so.
Any, any comments, questions, interaction, uh, on this item?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Bros as our bridge inspection for twenty-four.
Motion in a second on the floor to approve Bros Engineering to do our local bridge inspections, any discussion to that motion?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to add, I, I think they do a really good job, um, and they do have knowledge of all of our bridges, they have been doing them for as long as I've been on the board, um, they do it. And, and we have bridges that are, we don't have any on the six-month rotation yet.
Well, there's one on Impala Place that could be getting closed down soon, but it's-
I mean, we're getting, there's a couple of them that I think are getting closed, so, uh, they're aware of those issues, so I think it's good to keep.
Any more discussion on this item, on this motion? Hearing non, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries, uh, go to item G two.
And this is our overweight enforcement, we request, uh, support from the state DOT or the Highway Patrol to enforce load limits for the spring thaw on our county roads. And, you know, we've reduced some of these roads in the past down to seven thousand tons per axle. Um, and I mean, there's a lot of different things that we can do, some of them we've left them on year-round, um, but with our deteriorating roads, you know, we may have to go a little bit further, whether it's, you know, lower speed limits, or even less weight, or less gross vehicle weight. I kinda wanted to just, you know, bring this up for discussion as much as anything, I mean, there's some things that obviously our roads are taking a beating out there, and with this freeze thaw weather that we have here, it's just, you know, it's hard, it's hard to, uh, tell when to put it on, when to take it off, but typically the state does it from, uh, I think it's April fifteenth, or, sorry, February fifteenth till April thirtieth is the, is kind of their recommended guidelines for the enforcement for spring thaw conditions, and we can take it off earlier than that if necessary. Um, but yeah, there's-
What, uh, question for you, and, and as you mentioned, it typically the concern is the spring with the thaw coming out, but it's, there's gotta be a significant amount of damage, just say some of our, we, we're seeing a lot of heavy construction and a lot of gravel hauling on a couple of roads in particular, but, uh, I mean, it, it's, it's gotta be hard on that when that, it gets to be over a hundred degrees as well, that asphalt's isn't as hard, and so it's gotta, it's gotta be just almost equally as hard on it, is, is that true, or is that, uh, just a speculation?
No, it definitely, it, it does get softer, there's no doubt about it, I mean, you can see it when somebody parks in one spot for a period of time that, you know, you can see tire, you know, indentations in the, in the pavement sometimes, but yeah. It's just, uh, the freeze thawing and then the moisture getting down into the road and, you know, coming out of the subgrade, it, it'll do damage to the road by itself without driving on it. So it's, um, but it's most susceptible, I think, in the springtime, but, you know, when it's super wet out, I, I can't argue with you that it's getting better. You know, or when it's a hundred degrees for a long period of time, I, I mean, I'm not sure what's the worst situation, but, um, this is the most obvious throughout the state, I guess, so that's why we're, we bring attention to it.
You know, I don't remember us never not passing this agreement, but at the same time, I do not recall ever hearing that a trucker was ever stopped for being overweight.
We did get one last year on Elk Vale.
You did?
Yes.
Wow.
Helped us out on that, um, you know, and the guy forgot to put down his extra pusher axle, otherwise he would've been legal, but still, it was, you know.
Well, y- you know, I think, I think a huge part of the problem is the, the HP does not traditionally, and maybe Pat can answer this question for me, doesn't patrol our county roads, and they're taxed and they're short-staffed and really, we're in a catch twenty-two, we really don't have a good mechanism for catching these overweight vehicles.
Commissioner Severn, you had something on to say?
Oh, I was just gonna ask, uh, basically, uh, what years, you know, whether it be roads, properties or whatever.
Y- yes, I mean, I can, as a superintendent, I, I have the authority to do it up and throughout those dates till April thirtieth, but I believe the commission by resolution can extend this throughout, you know, throughout the year.
Uh, we lowered the, the load limit on New Underwood last year, was it last year?
Yeah.
Uh, to seven thousand, uh, or seven tons an axle, uh, and we kept it on, so we didn't, we did that by resolution.
Yeah, just see, I, I know we, we pulled out out in the um, you know what.
Mm-hmm. Yep, no, for like emergency situations where there's like irreversible damage being done, we can, we definitely have, have the ability to enforce, you know, above and beyond what this consists of.
I was, uh, uh, do you have a couple of roads in mind, I, I can think of Elk Vale, it seems like there's a lot of pressure on Elk Vale and that.
Yeah, there's heavy truck traffic on that road, and, um, you know, New Underwood Road obviously is not getting any better. Um, so those are two, two of them that I can think of right now that would be, you know, something that I would recommend, looking, you know, whether it's reduce speed limits altogether, just to, you know, slow the trucks down so they're not bouncing, you know, at such high, higher rate of speed will help. Um, otherwise, if we had a gross, a gross weight, you know, versus seven tons per axle, 'cause those centipedes, you know, they have however many axles, it, it gets to be way up there in pounds, but, um, I don't know what's fair, I, I mean, I'm not trying to put anybody out of business here or anything like that, but I'm just trying to preserve the roads that we have.
Definitely something we need to put some thought together on, and I, New Underwood Road is not getting any better, there's no doubt about that, and it's, it's, uh, we're, scares me, 'cause I use that road a lot, um, and, and all cattle on that road, and a lot of people rely on that road, it's not just me, but, uh, um, we're, that seven ton is getting about as low as you can go per axle-wise, now we could go to, we have considered gross weight as well. Um, limiting some trucks, I know, uh, Sheriff West and Deputy Johns had some ideas that we want, we need to discuss further as well. Um, but yeah, there's, we're, we're gonna have to get some thinking caps on, 'cause it's, it's not getting better. Hopefully the state can come in and save the day, but at the same time, I
in the, in the meantime, I think we gotta do our-
We've gotta do something, absolutely, uh, whether it's reduce speed, uh, find a way to reduce trucks, um, uh, something needs to be done, so I agree. So let's, uh, I guess there's really nothing we can act on today, but, uh, let's, let's keep thinking on it. Uh, with commissioners and your liaisons and we'll go, go forward.
Sounds good, thank you.
Um, I have a, I have a different question. Um, Rich, did you talk to Troy about Big Horn?
Yeah, I did, so, um, I had that discussion with him this morning, that's a, a short section of road, I don't know why we were maintaining it, that should be a no-maintenance road, um.
Yeah, and they've got, uh, they've got a survey that, you know, shows the hundred and twenty-ninth is a county road and stuff, but a, a road designations change and-
Yeah, all roads are county roads, and, and we choose to maintain them how we maintain them.
Right.
Um, that particular one is honestly a driveway, and I don't know how we get a blade turned around at the end of that.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, it's, to me, it's a no-maintenance road.
Can you call them?
Yes, I, I definitely will, I wanted to, you know, have this discussion as well, uh, today, to know where we stood with this one, 'cause it is, you know, it's just like, where do you start, where do you stop, where do you even turn around, and it's obviously not a county-spec road either, so I, I didn't know the history of all of it or whatever. You know, they claim that we've been doing some maintenance here and there, but, um, I'm not positive on that myself, so.
I mean, we, any subdivision road that's put in, in a right-of-way is technically a county road, um, we just don't maintain them.
Right, I know.
What, uh, what's your best guess then, Troy, as far as the state, they're, they're looking at our road system right now, maybe Rich has an answer as well. Uh, because there is several of these roads I'd, I'd like to even work on.
Yeah, I don't know what Larry's schedule is, I, I know he was backed up and then I think he got most of the cities out of the way, I'm assuming, uh, we can touch base with him again this month and hopefully get that moving along, uh, for the reclassification of our road system.
There's a lot of, uh, that would kinda hinge as well as some of these bridges that are really not in areas-
Yeah, it doesn't, that doesn't affect the bridges though.
I understand it doesn't, but it, as far as possibly getting rid of some of them.
They're on a section line, and the state gave them those in the nineties.
It may qualify for some additional funding, just because there's money for secondary roads that you can't use on primaries, so that, it, it does give us opportunity there, but-
That's a good point.
Uh, maybe we just need to, I can reach back out to Larry and-
But it'd be, yeah, I'd like to-
Take it off again.
Keep on that project, 'cause I know there's a couple of these roads that'd be nice to reclassify.
Yep, definitely.
Any other questions for Troy? Thanks, Troy.
You bet, thank you.
Talk for one more minute, now we're gonna have awkward silence, so we have a ten AM hearing. Um, let's move down to item F two, Tanya, if you'd wanna start on that, it's not quite ten o'clock, so if you could start talking on the variance request? We'd start talking, I believe we have somebody here from you'd like to let us know what this about, did this did go before planning the other day?
Yes, it did.
Well, and, and, yeah, I've looked at this and what's planning did make sense, so, go ahead.
So the property is located-
Please identify yourself, for anyone watching.
Sorry, Tanya Vig, Planning Director. Um, project was submitted January to the planning board, um, for a variance request to build without a, to build, to apply for a building permit without plating the parcel of land. The parcel is located approximately sixty-five miles east of Sturgis. Um, it's a quarter-quarter dis- um, description, less highway lots that were taken out for Highway two twelve. Um, the quarter-quarter does lie entirely north of two twelve, so that's why we, um, are in support of the variance. Um, on the, we did have some conditions to be placed on the variance though, um, since we, since they have requested not to plat it. Um, only one primary dwelling may be permitted with approval of the variance, permits for outbuildings may be issued with approval of this variance. No additional, no ADU buildings may be permitted without plating. Um, and prior to the building permit, um, they get approval from the South Dakota DOT for an approach permit. Um, so they can change the, from ag, an ag approach to a residential approach as part of that requirement. And then the landowner is here also, if you have any questions for him.
Do you have anything that, Mr. Ingles, I presume? Yeah, do you have anything to add?
Make sure your mic is on.
Yeah. I, I think you were here at the planning meeting as well, I was uh, Commissioner Wazork, do you have anything to add?
No, yeah, you know, our ordinance allows them to build on a house if it's over, if it's forty, if you got it eloquent. The only reason they're not forty is because the highway cuts a bit above, because two twelve, not two twelve, twelve, um, you know, it has that wider right-of-way, and so there's a take there that slims it down, and then they're on a section line on the edge of the DOT controls the, it's an approach the DOT controls under that section line, and it takes just a little bit of the property too. Uh, the other thing is, his family or land borders them significantly, could border them on the north and I think the west side.
I remember looking at this, uh, when it's first got, I think it was in your office, and I thought, oh man, glad to make you have to go through all this, but, uh, for, for to get this variance, but I guess that was, that is the rule. So, uh, anyway, is there, I gotta ask, is there anybody from the public wish to speak to this? Anybody from the public wish to speak to this? Public wishes to speak, so it's public testimony, uh, any questions, any more discussion, questions, interaction on this?
Make a motion to, uh, to grant the variance with the conditions listed, um, from the planning board.
Second.
Same as what they did.
Motion in a second to essentially copy the planning board's motion. Say, any discussion to that motion? Hearing non, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, and all opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you, Mr. Ingles for coming in. That was the roads coming in that way. Okay, well, drive safe, thanks for your time, Jay.
Aye.
Uh, brings us to item F one, emergency budget supplement hearing. This is, uh, in regards to the switches that, uh, Tony did to get that we, we felt it was probably in need of a, an emergency, so we wanted to, uh, get this on the agenda right away, we thought about running it through the assigned funds, as these were approved in the assignment. But, uh, with that said, we needed to hustle this up because it is an emergency, so to speak, so, uh, we, we decided, or I shouldn't say we, um, Rich has been working with Tony and him and I have been in communication, so we decided we probably should get this one on as soon as we can and put this on it under emergency. Rich, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no, I, I think, and I appreciate all of the, the department heads for working with us on these, this is a new, a new process in how we're, we're doing the budget, um, this, this one is a little bit, uh, different, I mean, we, we did have to, to repair these, um, they're pretty critical. But the, the upcoming budget portions or the scheduled, uh, hearings that we're gonna do for the assessments, it's just a little bit different method than what we have been doing, so I appreciate patience with everybody and look forward to this, this method, I think it keeps it nice and clean and pretty open to everybody, so.
Any other questions, comments, interaction?
Make a motion to approve the a hundred and seventy thousand for the switches.
Second.
Motion in a second on the floor to approve, uh, the a hundred and seventy thousand for the switches under emergency budget supplement hearing, uh, any more discussion on that motion? Hearing non, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. You guys wanna break, or are we?
We're good to keep going.
All right, that's what I thought, okay, well, sometimes you guys about this time, well, request a break, I'm trying to be nice, again, I'm starting to hear off nice, don't, don't expect it at any time, any other time frame. Let's go down to item H one. Uh, this is a, uh, is brought to our attention from the state auditor that, uh, there are times in which, uh, we- has brought to our attention from the state auditor that, uh, there are times in which, uh, we don't need to publish, uh, beforehand, some of our hearings. We can simply post them. If I'm saying something wrong, Mr. Kleber, please, please correct me, uh, which will save us, uh, a considerable amount of time. Uh, the, the issue becomes on some things, uh, with, with some of the papers that we have to publish in, uh, that it's, uh, hard to get them in for, if we have to do, say, uh, ten days prior. And so if you have, like, say, Faith in, for instance, uh, they'd only publish on every week, so therefore you have to have it in that Wednesday. So if we make a decision today, for instance, if we wanna call a hearing, we can't call a hearing at our next meeting if it has to require publishing. Uh, uh, so therefore if we're able to post it, so we found out from the state auditor that, uh, there are certain things that we can just simply post on a bulletin board within the county office here at the Erskine Building.
You can almost think of it the other way around. There are certain things that have to be published. Everything else can go on the notebooks, on the, on the bulletin board.
There are certain things that say they have to be published. I think most everything has to be published, but some don't have to be published ten days prior. Is that?
Um, most things don't have to be published. Um, two that come to mind that do, you did an alcohol this morning for a transfer, uh, that has to be published, um, in the paper. This, the statute says it shall be published once or twice or whatever. Um, budget process as well, not the supplemental hearings, but the, uh, initial budget process. Uh, has to be published certain times and, and frames. Um, unaware of this, I mean, it's been on the books the whole time I've been here. We're just unaware of it. Uh, Gary brought this to our attention. Uh, there's the statute. The resolution basically takes the statute and puts it into a different format because the statute does require that the commissioners designate by resolution where that bulletin board is.
Oh, and I've, uh, that, that were designated, I believe in the resolution, this, the bulletin board downstairs, which we felt that was the one people, uh, were walking and seeing the most. But I, I did request that it would be hung up on this bulletin board as well. I think it's appropriate. It's not designated that way, but it could be appropriate right out of, out of the commission.
That just says courthouse, though.
Oh, but it also says if there's a different building in which the, uh, in which the, yeah, that'd be good. But a rancher can go on a limb when he talks about that. Yes.
Yeah. Well, I guess technically.
It's all, yeah, that's, that's the key word to me is the most pub, most public places in the town.
All right. It would make sense to me, but, and the, the thing about the court, the, the separate building.
It's not just for the court, it's, you know, like many statutes, they're.
Yes.
Perfect.
Yeah, wha- what's the purpose? Is to give notice where people go.
Yeah, for stuff going on here.
And it uses the, the strange phrase that it has to be posted by any, uh, solely by any elector of the state of South Dakota. That's anybody registered to vote. So if you're not registered to vote in South Dakota, don't put anything up on the notebook, on the bulletin board.
So another question, uh, and you looked for the resolution because, which you did not find. Uh, so will this need to be passed every year then, or is it something that?
No, just once.
Any other questions?
And we just don't have it, haven't had a good system for finding resolutions in the auditor's office. So it may have been done at some point in the past. I don't recall it in the last nineteen years, but.
And I think it, I think we still publish, I think we still do what we're doing, but this will cover the base of if we have to get something done. Any other questions, comments?
Well, it should make government more efficient. Move it along.
Yeah. Questions, comments, and or action? Second. Motion in second on the floor to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh three. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, goes, go down to I one on the, which is, uh, I, item I is budget supplement request out of assigned funds. Um, we assigned, uh, just, just to brief, uh, Commissioner Severn, is it Severn or Severin? Severn, okay. Um, just to brief Commissioner Severn, we, uh, assigned some money, uh, uh, probably, I don't know if you've sent an email on, on what would the assigned funds were yet. But, uh, yeah, if you, again, sometimes, so, uh, so we'll be going through throughout the year, um, and, and looking at some of these assignments that we have. And so each time we've requested that, in, in order to do that, we still, we gotta supplement our budget each time. Uh, most, or all of these will, are coming from the assigned funds that we approved. Yeah, the auditor will get you an email.
And, uh, the assigned funds, so this is a, a requirement from the state that says that we can't have more than forty percent of our, um, total budget, uh, I think on the general fund in savings essentially. They limit the amount that we can save, which is kind of a pain, but, uh, it means that we're not taxing too much. So, um, so just because these are assigned funds, uh, are we, so we assigned them in, in the end of last year, uh, doesn't mean that we're going to allocate all of those funds. We have to park it in those funds. Um, there is a potential that we will do those projects, but it may not be this year. It might be.
I think we also have to explain to him since it's a large amount of money. It is not because we overtaxed. It's because we use the COVID funds and the American Rescue Funds in different manners to free up this pot of money used for one-time expenditures.
And, and we have been planning for some of these expenditures for a number of years.
Okay.
Haynes is a five million dollar project, which is hard to save for, for a county. So, um, yeah, we, we aren't overtaxing it and, you know, to be honest, Robin did a fantastic job, uh, last year with finding some places for us to gain some really good revenue on the money. So we put it into CDs, we did short-term CDs on, sorry, sorry to bring you up, but good explanation of how we get to where we are at.
Robin Schreikme, County Treasurer. We did not take it, um, place money in CDs. We did a high interest money market, which we were getting four percent on.
We, we did gain quite little funds from that last year. The first time that I know of that the county done that and had the ability to do.
Yes.
I appreciate that as well.
In the past, we were lucky to get fifty thousand dollars a year in interest. Uh, this year, Robin was getting more than fifty thousand dollars every month.
We were averaging about seventy-five thousand a month.
Wouldn't it be nice if we had that money?
Uh, so, so essentially this is, this is a new process for us all. Uh, we're gonna stumble through it maybe a little bit this year. Uh, but after assigning these funds, it, it, uh, did not give department heads budgetary authority. So they have to come and ask for a hearing first. And then after that hearing is set, then they'll, and, and we will, after the hearing, if we approve it, then they'll have the authority to go up. So it's gonna be a little bit longer of a process to, to, for them to get it versus if we had just budgeted. But, so today, we're just setting the hearing. We're not necessarily approving it, but, uh, we are just setting the hearing. So, um, is any commissioners, we have the facilities, uh, on there and, uh, sheriff as well as communication, which is under the sheriff's office. Does any commissioner like to speak to either those department heads or can we just move?
I, I think that we've, uh, you know, when we started, started doing the assignments, I think these were the ones that were identified in the budget process very early on and we decided to push those into, um, the assignments and we carried that, and those across into this, these requests. So I think these are all, um, ones that have been discussed by the department heads as far as I know. There's a couple, um, you know, as we go forward and how we, we do this, I, I did have a question I asked you, Gary, and like Haynes. Um, do we need to assign those funds prior to letting our, accepting bids? Or, you know, how's that timing work? Cause if we assign, you know, five million dollars, then that's what people may bid to. So that's a question for me. Um, I don't know the answer to that, but it's, it's kind of back to the auditor's side of the world, so. Um, but I think, I think that the stuff that's on the list today is things that have been discussed in our budget process. At least I'm good.
Anybody else have any questions?
I would think we could go ahead and bid it because, without transferring the funds, because I do believe that that gives them an indication of what our top line is. Plus, we don't pay until a project is going through phases of completion.
I guess.
It would give us plenty of time.
Yeah, and I think I answered differently, but I didn't quite catch the question right. So it, 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 I think we could bid it. But it, it, to trans, I thought you were talking about transferring the money.
No.
Asked me earlier.
No, it was just, I mean, it's just a timing thing and how we do this and, and I'm, honestly, if it's a, if it goes to a hearing and it's not guaranteed, right? So I, I mean, that's, that's my question for those.
Well, we could still bid it without, you don't need a hearing to bid it.
Yeah, so I would ask, maybe Ken could look at that because I, you might be able to bid it, but you could not award the bid without the money budget.
He, he gave a thumbs up and that's what I would assume as well.
Yeah, so, I mean, you've got a timing issue. So.
I, I agree. I don't think that you can award the bid because you don't have the money in the budget at that point.
But you can, we can take bids.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and, I mean, the timing isn't bad. I mean, you've got a set of hearing. Uh, it doesn't have to be published, so there's no restriction on that. Um, it's set for, you know, the next, the next meeting of the commissioners.
Well, yeah, what you'd wanna do is if you're doing bid openings at one meeting, or you plan to set your hearing at the next one. So if you've got a, cause you probably only have thirty days to.
But you can, but you could also, if you know the bid's coming one meeting, you could set your hearing, the meeting prior to that meeting.
He refers it.
Well, I guess you'd have to have the dollar amounts would be the problem with that. So, yeah, that's the problem, so.
We could set the hearing the same day that we receive bids.
You could set, yes. Or it'd be the next meeting, as, as Commissioner Wazork said. Okay. So it, does anybody would like to speak to these department heads on this before, and, and simp, alls we're doing today is simply setting the hearing. So next meeting would be the official, they are awarded or were turned down for these projects. Or we have action on this, to set the hearing.
Uh, yes, I'll make a motion to set the supplemental budget hearing for January twenty-eighth.
Mr. Chair, I believe that Ken did say that we are supposed to specify that it's going to be published on the bulletin board. In, as part of the motion.
So published on the bulletin board downstairs.
We have to do that, Ken, and I don't mind doing it, but do we have to do that with that resolution?
The statute for the supplemental is specific that it's published in whatever banner the board designates.
Okay, that's, thank you.
So the resolution should include.
Cause we used to say publish in the newspaper.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I do have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion second, uh, to set supplemental hearing for items, uh, and facilities, which is cooling tower at eighty thousand dollars, architecture roof design seventy-two thousand dollars. Sheriff's Office is requesting seventy thousand dollars. The tough looks and communications is requesting seventy-two thousand for dispatching software and thirteen thousand for geocom mapping software. Did I miss anything? Sheriff Lester, Ben. Uh, motion second on the floor to set the supplemental budget hearing for our next meeting, which is January twenty-eighth at ten o'clock, I would assume. And being posted on the bulletin board. Uh, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Oh, same sign. Brings us down to, uh, HR, Deborah's not in the room. Let's go down to commission. Several items we need to tackle in this, uh, anything in communicate. Lots of information. Uh, I don't see anything that needs to be acted on. Uh, we're not there yet, or just at communicate, I'm just looking in communicate. Uh, let's go down to item L two on the commission calendar. I do have a one, would like to, best changing. Uh, our September, I, I would, I think that we could, uh, just have our, uh, one, two, excuse me, two meetings in September. Uh, I'd like to just take out that summer, September ninth meeting and have our meeting be on the September second. Uh, the reason for doing so is, uh, statute requires us to meet that first Tuesday, which is the second anyway, to discuss the budget. Um, and it also, the, the state convention is the next weekend. Ed was pretty religious about going, I know during, I went this year. So I just think it makes sense if we would change that to the September second. I did ask Commissioner Wazork and that will come before planning that month, but you don't see. Certainly. Yeah. Um, anyway, that's, that's the only thing, looking at the calendar would, if that's, hey, with everybody to change that, we'll just.
Mr. Chair, did you wanna talk about your December meeting? We have, or the second meeting?
Yeah, thank you. Um, uh, this year it landed on Christmas Eve, didn't it? I guess, yeah, I don't have a problem with the twenty-third, but I don't know if that's, uh, how does that, does that affect anything on payroll or, uh?
I don't believe so.
Like to travel or have travel plans? Does anyone know?
Probably is a little bit better, in all honesty, because there's another week of.
Well, uh, just a second, is it?
I, I'm fine with the twenty-third.
Let's just keep it at the twenty-third then. Oh, it seems like it. I missed you guys so much. We've been gone for four weeks, Scott.
It's been so nice.
I'm being nice.
I know, I didn't know what I was.
So let's keep the, let's, let's set the schedule then, um, uh, September twenty-third or September second and then December twenty-third. Any other questions, comments, and or action on that?
Make a motion to approve the calendar with the changes of, uh, commission meeting on the September second, starting at, I, they're all starting at nine. Um, and then also the December twenty-third instead of the. And as importantly, the September ninth meeting is just struck out.
Any, I have a second on that. Motion in second on the floor to accept the proposed commission meeting dates. Changes September second, September ninth off and December twenty-third is being. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, elected officials rate of pay, I would, uh, I just wanna interject here before we go on. I, I think it would be appropriate if at this time, uh, we, uh, wherever we're gonna prove these at, but, uh, to strike the auditor off of this at this point in time. I think we've got, uh, we've got some work ahead of us and some planning to do in, in that office. Uh, um, uh, just to update Commissioner Severn, uh, that we, Ria's been our auditor, uh, she was, she was appointed last year. And, uh, we, we thought there's gonna be an interim basis. Uh, we didn't have anybody apply for that position. And, uh, we, we had, uh, a couple of people run, uh, full petitions. Actually, we had one that just, uh, said that they did not want to accept that position. So we're, uh, we've gotta put our heads together and figure out what we wanna do there. So I think, uh, that, the technically that, uh, auditor does not, uh, not, the, the new auditor wouldn't, wouldn't start until March, March anyway. So I think at this time it'd be appropriate to just strike the auditor's pay on this. Figure out what we're gonna do and, and maybe revisit it in March.
Strike it or just leave it?
I would, I think we strike it totally and just don't set it. We're not setting it, basically. So we're just, yeah, I think we just don't set it and take it off of there for right now. What I would recommend. Any other questions, comments on that?
I would make that motion. Um, I would point out that the, uh, increase in our elected officials wages, um, was the same as the rest of the county employees. Um, I would point out that the, uh, increase in our elected officials' wages, um, was the same as the rest of the county employees, which was a dollar an hour. So their increase is two thousand and eighty based on what a full work year is.
So, what's your motion?
The motion I.
With the exclusion, with the elimination of the auditor position from that.
So your motion is to set the salaries with the exclusion of the auditor at the twenty-twenty-five numbers?
Yeah, I'm assuming the motion is to, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Creed, uh, the motion would be to, uh, approve this resolution, twenty-twenty-five dash oh-two, which would cover that, which would cover all of that with it, with the auditors off of that.
With the exclusion of the auditor, right.
Is that correct?
Right.
Does that have the wages on it?
The other was just an explanation, which I just kept going and didn't stop.
Yep. We have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion second on the floor to approve resolution twenty-twenty-five dash oh-two, which is the elected officials' wage policy with the exclusion of the county auditor on that. Uh, any discussion on that motion?
So, I'll throw something out there. Um, I, I would probably oppose the motion because I think we're out of whack on a couple of these with the, but I checked with, um, HR. We're planning on doing another, uh, wage analysis, starting probably in March. Um, and then probably revisiting a number of, uh, of what we're paying people. Uh, I checked with HR, HR said that, um, these positions, these elected positions be included in that analysis. So we'll have a better idea where we sit with people. So rather than me making motions, kind of taking guesses, I'm trying to wait for that study to be completed.
Right, I'm anxious too to see what that, uh, survey produces and I believe we've, we've also told, um, other employees that there can be adjustments coming. Pending that survey results.
Yeah, I mean, we got to wait and see what they, they say.
Right.
I mean, I think wages haven't been going up as aggressively as they did a couple of years ago, uh, but I think there's been some trending up in especially certain areas.
Yeah.
You, uh, Ken, question on this resolution? And I just caught it now, but should have noticed this earlier. So it's, it essentially, it's dated today, which is appropriate, but then it's effective, December's twenty-third, and I know why, but is that, can we do that? Okay.
No, that's fine.
Hey, motion and second on the floor to approve, uh, Mead County Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Oh-Two. Any discussions to that motion? Any more? Hearing non, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Uh, item L four, commission rate of pay.
I'll make a motion to raise commission rate of pay by three percent.
Motion and a second on the floor to raise the commission rate of pay three percent. Any discussion to that motion?
Um, I, I derived it three percent because the, you know, we, we can't do a dollar an hour. I mean, if we did, it'd actually probably be more, especially for Gary and Doreen who spend a bunch more time probably doing this than Richard I. Um, and we'll see about our own. It's, it's going to be pretty intense sometimes, but, um, if you figure the dollar an hour, uh, wage, that's actually five percent out of twenty dollars an hour. So, you know, for a lot of county employees, you're going to be getting bigger than us, some will. Thirty, that's still, I'm doing my math, that's still more than three percent that they got. So I, I'm, I think the three makes sense.
Any more discussion to the motion? Hearing non, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Opposed it.
I opposed it.
Uh, uh, we could note.
Rich wanted more.
Commissioner Leggett, uh, was, was a dissenting vote. You're kind of in between there.
Kind of threw me off.
We're just quick on the draw.
Okay. Uh, L five, uh, pay for planning board and weed and passport. Uh, current, currently the rate is a hundred fifty dollars per meeting for the planning board plus mileage, and weed and pest gets a hundred dollars per meeting.
Yeah, didn't we just raise, we separated those just last, was it just last year we made that difference?
I think it could have been two years ago, but time flies.
Two, yeah.
There's so, there's getting to be more and more for the planning board.
It's, yeah.
Little doubt, uh, I'm liaison on the weed board and there is, that's fairly easy.
Is, is that still sufficient with, for the planning board?
I, I, I would, I would say probably for this year. Probably need to revisit it. It had been at a hundred for a long time. Uh. But, you know, most of the people on the planning board, they get to take that. Or if they stayed at the regular job. They're all community minded too, so. Something that it recognizes. Um, so, yeah, I think we can, I think, uh, probably have it on the radar.
Um. Yeah, go ahead, Matt.
I'll make a motion to set the twenty-twenty-five planning board rate at a hundred and fifty dollars per meeting with mileage and the, uh, weed and pest rate at one hundred dollars per meeting with mileage. Uh, state rate mileage.
Motion and a second on the floor to, uh, set the pay for planning board and weed and pest board. Any discussion to that motion? Uh, Commissioner Creed? Any discussion to the motion? Hearing non, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. And item L six, election worker pay. Dollars a day for school, election school. Hundred dollars a day for election workers, two twenty-five for election supervisors, seventy-five for election workers. Five for ballot box pickup drivers. Mileage at state rate, twenty dollars an hour, audit board worker, twenty-five for post-election. Questions, comments, and/or action?
I think we raised that when Helen was here. And I wanted to make sure we were at least at minimum wage, which we are. Not much above, but we are at minimum, right about. Are you having trouble finding people?
Any other questions, comments, and/or action?
Make a motion to approve the election worker rate of pay, uh, with the amounts the same as twenty-twenty-four.
Oh, do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing non, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, I think I'd like the minutes to reflect these amounts. Goods, we have something to go back to. Uh, brings us to item L seven, mileage and per diem rate. Um, typically, I guess we haven't really had per diem rate on agenda that I, since I've been on the commission. Essentially, I don't know as if, Ria and I went a little bit back and forth on this. I don't really know if we need to approve a mileage rate, Ken, that's in our policy, that we accept the state rate, is that correct? My understanding, the policy book is what, that's the statement it makes.
Yeah, if, if the handbook states that we follow the state rate, then you don't need a separate resolution on it.
No.
Because it's already, it's already been adopted.
Yeah, you wouldn't want it to conflict, would be a possible problem if we didn't get it. So I don't know if that needs to be approved. Uh, Ria thought it'd be good to put these, uh, the, the per diem stuff, which I agreed, I think it's a good idea to get these in there to show what, what is available, what, what, what they are, or if we want to relook at them, so.
We, we used to always have a per diem rate, I remember when Jerry Dur was here. Somebody was traveling, he would automatically run down to the treasurer's office and get the per diem and give it to them. Um, I guess one of my questions is, is when, when I look at this, um, who primarily even uses these meals? Are, are they primarily hourly employees? I'm thinking of deputies who are traveling like De Yankton or whatever. And, um. Pretty, I don't even know if you can eat at McDonald's anymore for six bucks for breakfast. I don't know.
This is the state rate though, right?
I know it's the state rate, it, it, it's amazing how things change. What's the matter, Talby?
Oh.
I g- I guess they can spend the night in a motel and get a free breakfast.
There you go, you got it all, you're game in the system, Doreen.
Yeah, yeah. Make that extra six bucks.
These amounts were what we've had on file, is that's where they came from, is that correct, Ria?
They're, they are our current rates and they are the state rates.
That's, that's what I. Um, if there's any, no need to, if, unless we want to change it, there's really no need to make a motion, that would be the rate, is that correct, Ken?
Right.
Okay. So I wanted, I think we just put this on here just so everyone's aware. Uh, let's move down then to item L eight, adopt legal papers of Mead County. Currently Faith Independent is the legal paper of, uh, Mead County. It, statute requires us to have a legal paper and it has to be published in the county, is that correct? And Faith is the only one that is, so they're, they're typically post in Faith Independent, uh, notices as well as the Black Hills Pioneer. Any other questions, comments, and/or action?
In Rapid City, we do publish, um, bids, so when we do go out to bid, that's what that one's in there for.
Right.
So I'll make a motion to designate Faith Independent as our legal newspaper.
Motion and second to make Faith Independent our legal newspaper?
Oh, but I believe last year it identified the other ones for the doc when we were bidding, but I don't know if that's.
For Ken on that, but I, I think last year we had a big discussion because we're not publishing minutes anywhere. I think is because.
Believe we are in the Pioneer, aren't we?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's, let's stop.
I thought we were going to stop publishing minutes.
Let's handle, let's handle Faith right now, it's our legal newspaper, if we want to make a separate motion for, for, uh, something else, let's do that, so. Let's, uh, motion on the floor is to have, uh, make Faith Independent our legal newspaper in Mead County, motion and second. Is there any discussion to that motion? Hearing non, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, okay.
So on the other newspapers, we don't necessarily have to designate that, we can just, as, as we need, we can.
Especially you have to identify the legal papers for the county, the rest is a case-by-case basis where you choose to publish.
I believe the, uh, we, we designated Faith as our legal newspaper, but I believe in, I guess, going on a limb here, I remember this discussion. But I think we said we would post, uh, minutes in the Black Hills Pioneer.
Thought we were going to not post minutes, but we're going to post like notices and things like that because this, uh, because the hearings are more important than doubling up on the minute.
That's, you're, you're a hundred percent right, but I, I'll have to look back at the motion. What would the, what would you like the motion to be now, I guess is, it's more important than what it was?
Well, I'm, I'm fine with the Faith being, but I mean, I, I'm not sure it makes sense to be publishing minutes in two separate papers.
I agree.
And it's more than minutes, we publish hearings, we publish essentially everything that we're publishing in the Faith Independent, we're publishing in the Pioneer.
Yeah, notice, notices of hearings, notices of liquor license, budgets.
All of our election things that we had to publish.
I still think we should publish the notices of all those and just not the minutes in them.
Okay.
Okay, and let's, okay.
Um. I believe, I believe you can publish in up to three newspapers. Um. It is regretful that none of these newspapers have a substantial circulation in Mead County. I wish that our Mead County webpage had a tab on it where the legal notices could be easily viewed. It is, for people not familiar with our webpage, it is hard for them to find legal notices. And a lot of people do read the legal notices. As a result, some people go to the South Dakota Newspaper Association and go through their whole scenario to find the legal notices.
Doreen, I'm happy to work with Tony and to see if we could actually create a tab. That would be great.
So what, I, 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 and I agree, I mean, it's, I get calls once in a while, uh, Pennington County Current would sue us from pretty much my place, south, uh, and east. But, uh, nonetheless, would you like, I guess I'm trying to think of how we would word a motion to post our notices because we just set a resolution saying we can post them on the bulletin board. So if we're going to require both, I guess it wouldn't have to be in a time.
I don't know that you need a motion for other papers, it's not required. Um, I mean, you're giving direction to your auditor on.
To get it posted.
Yeah, don't, for, don't publish minutes.
Okay.
You know, and that's, I don't think you needed a motion for that.
That satisfactory, Commissioner Weisorick?
Yeah, um, I, but I think we should give direction to the auditor and not, like, permanently give that direction. The other comment I was going to make, you know, there is a South Dakota public notices website that puts all the public notices out.
It's, it's in, in the South Dakota Newspaper Association.
Yeah, so, I mean, there is other places people can find me.
That, that being said, uh, the Black Hills Pioneer is the only newspaper that covers the county at all. Um. You know, they're trying their best to, uh, get circulation down here. That, that being said, um, I highly doubt that the Faith Independent has any circulation outside of eastern Mead County geographical area. So we are not reaching our citizens.
So am I fair to say that all notices that must be published in the newspaper will go into both newspapers? No minutes will be published in the Black Hills Pioneer?
That's, that's my.
That, that'd be my, mine as well.
I, and you could just say all notices. You just said all notices have to be published, so we could say all notices, we're not given the time limit. But the time is the key with the bulletin board.
So that, that makes me, so are we, so it does not work to publish, to use the bulletin board as a source to be able to use the next meeting and publish in the newspaper?
It does, because I'm not, the, the concern and the reason for the bulletin board was the time, timing, and getting it in, in that ten-day and two-week timeframe. So essentially, we're saying it has to be published in these papers. It, we're not saying by the ten-day rule, essentially, we're just saying it needs to just get it in there.
I was all excited about saving publishing fees and Gary, you're throwing it right back.
Yeah, I, I was too.
Well, no, I, I was too, but then, but you brought it up that you'd like it in.
Well, well, no, I mean, I'm actually trying to cut the publishing fee cost because I think, you know, the discussion and the conclusion last year was not to put minutes in. Um, now, any notice that has to be published, I think is the question, because it doesn't make any sense to me to have the bulletin board be able to work and even be publishing in the Faith paper.
I, I concur with that thought process.
I understood you wrong, and I apologize, so, yeah, so anything that has to be published then? Would you like to make that in the form of a motion?
Well, but not minutes, okay, I'll make a motion that, uh, we also publish in the Black Hills Pioneer any notices that have to be published, but not the minutes.
Second?
Motion and second on the floor to also publish in the Black Hills Pioneer any notice that has to be published, but not minutes. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing non, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Me.
Motion carries, uh, Commissioner Creed is dissenting. Um, let's go down to item L nine. Assessment policy. Resolution Twenty, Twenty-Five Oh-One. Rick? Or, excuse me, Treasurer Frank?
Robin Schreik, Mead County Treasurer. I did, um, have to re, um, we have our percentage for our money market, our interest rate, it did go down the first of the year. It went down unfortunately to three point nine five percent. We have that for sixty days, we're trying. We're trying, in that time period, in that sixty days, looking at options for CDs now because we might have to flow over to a different. I have been working with First Interstate Bank, very pleased with what they have to offer. So I would like to continue with them. But we are working diligently to keep our interest rate up there as high as we possibly can.
I think they're coming back. Rates are going back up a little bit. We'll see how, you know, bond rates went up.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Treasurer Shreik or action?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five Meade County investment policy.
Second. Motion is second on the floor to approve Meade County Resolution twenty twenty-five oh one. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to item L ten. Hope everybody's, uh, I don't know Earl, Commissioner Severn, have you had a chance to look these over? Uh, I guess I'd ask anyone if they'd like to, uh, look at different appointments as far as liaison goes. Um, I thinking was, uh, if it would be okay with you, Commissioner Severn, that we would keep you, put you on everything that Commissioner Seaman had, which is the highway facilities and extension service.
I'm good with that.
Uh, everything else, everybody else okay with their appointments? I get a motion to approve these...
Make a motion to approve the commissioner appointments, uh, for twenty twenty-five with, um, Severn, uh, taking over Commissioner Seaman.
I'll second that.
Motion is second on the floor to approve the twenty twenty-five commission liaison appointments. Same as twenty twenty-four except for Severn taking payments. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item L eleven, uh, which is the committee appointment.
Um, I noticed we got a couple of expired and vacancies.
Yes, uh...
Have any of these people been contacted where there's a vacancy to see if such as...
I did contact Kevin Forster about staying on the weed and pest.
I assume he said yes.
He did say yes. I did contact Roger Gallimore about staying on the MPO Citizen Advisory Committee and he is happy to do so.
What about Lance Shear on the library board?
I did not reach out to Lance. My assumption is that that would be a yes, but maybe I shouldn't make that assumption.
What about this mental health board? I don't know. And apparently we have an open position. Who's been sitting in on those, Pat?
Karen Hunt was going to, I thought, and I, I thought Ron Merwin. Does that sound familiar?
Yeah, Karen needs to appear in front of the board, um, to approve anybody that she appoints. And Ron has been sitting in. Uh, as, we have not had, I can think of one in the last six months. Um, most of, the VA is remodeling, so they don't, they're not doing inpatient at the VA. And if you're not VA, then you go to Rapid City. So the, our mental illness hearings, Karen does the initial paperwork. And the hearings and all the follow-up is done in Rapid. And then we get billed for it.
Is, is the person involved, present at these meetings?
Yes, yes. And they are entitled to an attorney and one is appointed regardless. Because it's presumed that they're mentally ill, that perhaps they can't make a rational decision, so it's an automatic appointment by, by law.
Do they get...
They don't get billed.
Is it a calm procedure?
Yes, almost always. If, if the doctors feel it's unsafe for the patient or for the, the people involved, then the individual is not allowed to attend. They can be excluded, uh, for safety issues. And I can think of once, maybe twice, that that's occurred.
Mr. Clebrad, are these annual appointments or do they have terms or how does that work?
Um, I think just when she needs to appoint someone new, she's supposed to come to the board.
Do we, is there a term that expires or is just when somebody chooses to not do it any longer?
There are terms that are expired. They're appointed for a period of time.
Do we have any information on the current terms?
I do not.
Do you know where we can find that?
Uh, through Ms. Hunt. As the chairman of the board, yeah.
So apparently Ron is in the open position. Is there still a Greg Frye there?
Uh, yes. Uh, no, Greg is not there anymore. If I'm not mistaken.
So that essentially we just need...
Yeah, but a lot of people don't even know it expires.
So we essentially need to leave that one blank and...
I think you need to leave that open for now and, and reach out to Karen to appear and straighten things out.
Housing and redevelopment, Doreen, are you still interested in staying on?
Yeah, because I know not now the rest of your goal.
That's a pretty big assumption.
Well, I mean, you'd have to drive all the way into town.
Uh, Mr. Severn, would you want to be on the Meade County Fair Board? Um, and EMS, I'd, that's where Ted was at, uh, was that, I, I, was that set up when Ted was liaison of sheriff?
That, that, that actually has been set up for years. We just have not met. It is supposed to be, uh, that along with, uh, dispatch and ambulance used to also be a part of that. I originally started serving on that board when I was on the city council because there was supposed to be members of everyone that has a contract with dispatch for services, a representative from that entity, so that if they have any concerns about service, et cetera, it's all involved in that. And they also help, um, give any guidance necessary on emergency matters. But we used to, uh, negotiate the contracts at this committee meeting as well. Because Daniel used to, uh, always like to...
So what, uh, Ted was on that. Does, is that any, is that something you're interested in, Earl? Or what's, what's the suggestion of the board to go down? I don't know much about that.
I thi, I think we probably should. The fact that you're down in the southern part of the county should be good. Yeah, and, and I know Lisa has indicated that, uh, the city of Somerset has been wanting to bring some issues forward.
I would agree. If that's something you'd be interested in serving on, that, uh, we'll just put you on that as well. Um, I'm going to give you everything.
Thanks for great pay, Earl.
Yeah. Uh, the sick leave...
You only meet, you only, you only come to a meeting twice a month and that's all you do, Earl.
Uh, sick leave bank committee really hasn't met and I guess that's something that's up in the air as far as what's going to happen that. But, uh, uh, I, I guess I'll just take Commissioner Seaman's butt on that as chair. I think that would be appropriate. So we'll leave Serge's library board blank until we have a chance to talk...
I will reach out to Lance.
That's... Ted Roger Gallimore is good on the MPO. Okay. I think we're good on everything else. So that would be, uh... Everything except for mental illness in library, is that correct?
Yes.
Upset. Any other questions, comments, or action?
I'll make a motion. Uh, so I'll make a motion to us for the twenty twenty-five committees, uh, leaving the mental illness at this point blank and...
Library board.
The library board, uh, until we get confirmation, blank. Um, change with, uh, Commissioner Herring being on the sick leave bank committee and, um, Severn being in spots except for that.
Roger Gallimore being...
Roger Gallimore being reappointed.
I have a second to that motion. I'll second. Who won that one? I'll give it to Mr., Commissioner Severn. Uh, I've got a motion is second on the floor to approve these committee assignments with the changes noted. Did the secretary get all the changes? Do, uh, any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Uh, this brings us down to the consent calendar. Do you want to note that you probably, most everyone has noticed, but, uh, the rescinding of the burn ban is on that. I did get a couple of phone calls from a couple of fire chiefs saying that, uh, uh, they think that it could come off. Our ordinance is wrote pretty well now, I believe, in that if they want to put it back on in their area, they can still choose to do so. Um, but, uh, so I put that on the agenda for this. Action or any comments, interaction on the consent?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I get a second. Motion and a second on the floor, second is by Commissioner Creed, to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Down to, uh, did you have anything you'd like to report? Uh, we do have a couple items that we moved to after executive session, which is the short-term disability and the retirement of sick leave. That was going to be after executive session. If you have anything you'd like to report, we could do it now, Ms. Brenzrude, or, or if you'd like to handle all that stuff after that, we could do that then too. Okay. Uh, could I get a motion to go into exec?
I move to go into exec for legal personnel and contractual.
Motion and a second on the floor to go into exec for legal personnel and contractual. Any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're now in executive session. We're now in executive session.
Make a motion, come on executive. Motion second, come on executive session. Any discussion that motion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, same sign, motion carries. Uh, let's go down to item K two, which is short term disability proposal for 2025. Any comments, discussion, any questions for, uh, Ms. Ben Andrew with HR? Or action? Move on.
I will make a motion to enroll MEAD. I'm not sure exactly how the motion should read. But I would make a motion to enroll MEAD county employees in a short term disability policy, uh, for 2025 as presented by MetLife for an annual premium of $23,674, which would, um, cover employees for up to 11 weeks of disability 14 days after, um, having a covered illness or disability according to the summary of benefits.
A question on that motion. I guess one more second, but does that, would that include elected officials?
That, that question we do not know.
Okay.
Uh, based on.
Certainly.
That one question I asked.
The reason I asked the question.
So I'll say employees.
Yes, yeah. Yes, okay, we'll have to figure that out if that, we don't know if we need to basically is there, is why we ask that question, but, because you did say all employees, I just wanted to be careful. I need a sec.
Right.
Do you need a second?
I would second that motion.
Motion and a second on the floor to approve this short term disability policy. Any discussion to that motion?
Yeah, staying with kind of my comments I think I've made before. I'm against the short term disability policy, especially now where we're allowing people to carry over substantially more, um, of their sick leave and have extended a lot of that. The purposes that we were talking about, the short term potentially filling in that absence have really been done. Find out how to change that plan since first proposed.
Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Secretary note that there's, uh, three yays and two nays. Uh, motion carries, Commissioner Roy Zork and myself voted against. Uh, let's go down to human resources. Uh, uh, K three, options for retirement of sick leave. Uh, this is basically in regards to the dates that were originally set due to some unforeseen for circumstances. Uh, we, we weren't able to get some forms out as we originally had hoped, but, uh, so we, we just need to change some dates in the motion.
I'll make a motion that, uh, option payout of sick leave retirement form be sent out to employees no later than January 24th, 2025 by close of business. Fighting the remaining final accrual hours that employee return their elections if they, they want to, sides get paid out by close of business February 10th, 2025. That. That January 5th as the day for determining eligibility of people for, you know, January 5th, 2025.
Six years.
Yeah, for the anniversary date, yeah. Determining anniversary dates for payroll.
Uh, payroll and HR don't see any problem with that motion then, I assume. Okay, thank you. Yep, yep, certainly. Um.
I'll second.
Motion and second on the floor to, uh, change those dates. Is there any discussion to that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. I believe that, uh, concludes our meeting today, seeing no other further business. I will just declare us adjourned.